Good morning, welcome. I called order the June 20th, 2023 meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners, and I ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Mr. Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We now move to the citizens input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Are there any citizens who wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further action here. It's a special day here today, Employee Recognition Day, and it's obvious that these people are pretty important to us and to everyone else from the size of the crowd. It's the biggest crowd we've had in a long time, so it's a good thing. So at this point, we'll move into that employee recognition part of it, and I will ask, I will call in Shawn Robertson, our county appraiser.
So after 35 and a half years, Lee Ray Wilkie will be leaving Celine County. I just wanted to say she is by far the most conscientious and detailed worker I've seen in my 22 years here, and she ties things together for the departments, specifically the Deeds, the Appraiser, the Clerk, and GIS, and she's the go-between and the glue that holds all those together. I'm reminded of the farmer's commercial that she knows a thing or two because she's seen a thing or two. And there's that institutional knowledge over 35-plus years that will be very difficult to replace, and knowing how things work, how things go together. And I guess I just wanted to say that she will be sorely missed professionally and personally, and do have certificates signed by you all. It's in recognition of her retirement and appreciation for service to Celine County from January of 1988 to June of this year. Thank you and congratulations.
New Year's Eve all over again, Lee Ray. Lee Ray, are you sure you don't want to say something? Well, come back here for a second anyway, because thank you very much for your years of service to the county, and I echo Shawn's comments about, you know, your knowledge and dedication to the job just can't be replaced. That's a tribute to you, and we thank you very much. And if other commissioners wish to say something, why? Have right at it.
I'm kind of waiting for her. She says she's heard it all and seen it all. Would you tell us some of it?
Well, maybe not today here.
Thank you for your service.
I've enjoyed it, and I do enjoy detail work, so I'm going to miss it very much, but it's time for me to leave. I need me time.
And we wish you happiness and good health in your retirement, and one of the keys to my retirement, other than I took on this job, you know, have something to do tonight when you go to bed, have something to do for tomorrow, and you'll go quite a ways. So, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
With our next, with our next recognition, I'll call on Philip Smith Haynes, the county administrator.
Well, I've got two pretty important items to address the commission about this morning, but I think this one might be the more important of the two. Brad Bowers is the only IT director Celine County's ever had. He started when it was a department of one, and he's only had one job for 20 years. But my how that has grown over time. He's acquired a bunch of new skills during that timeframe, a bunch of new employees during that timeframe, a bunch of new bosses during that timeframe, and, you know, I've worked with, I've worked with a lot of IT folks over my career in local government, and I can truly say Brad is, sorry, I'm not going to get choked up, Brad is a unique and special combination of a person who can translate the technical pieces of the job and the management pieces of the job and the demands of the department heads and mesh that all together and keep us safe through cybersecurity protection and all the other, all the other things that he does. So this certificate of recognition, which has been signed by the commissioners, is awarded to Bradford Bowers in recognition for his retirement and appreciation for his service to Celine County, May 1st, 2003 to June 30th, 2023.
You have quite a fan club back there, Brad. Before we, I'm going to say something before we turn it right over to you, but I have admired Brad. He's opposite of Bob, okay? You all know that. I mean, you talk about a guy that is under a lot of stress and has a tough job, and everybody hollers when their computer doesn't work in today's world, and we all go, you know, berserk. Well, Brad, I admire him so much for being able to stay cool, calm, and collected under pressure. Nothing seems to quite faze him. He says, "Don't worry about it, we're going to take care of it," and he does. And he has a great staff with him, and he's, you know, put that staff together, and they're great, and we're going to miss you a bunch, buddy, a bunch. So other commissioners wish to say something before we?
You know, I'll just say, Brad, you know, the IT, in the IT world, it's not an easy world. I think we all started with hair at one time, and look where it's got you now. So Lauren, take a real good look at that. I mean, you've got your start there, but anyway, congratulations, Brad, and we're going to miss you here.
You know, I'll say one more thing. Maybe Brad's introduction to this job, to be able to stay so calm and cool and collected, was he was a baseball umpire, you know? They don't ever take any heat, so he knew how to, you know, do it. So, all right, go ahead, Brad.
Well, thanks for those kind words, Phil and commissioners. It's really good to see a lot of, a lot of former employees and old friends, the fun bunch back there. It's pretty early in the morning for them to be having fun. Anyway, I would, I would like to thank the Celine County user community. They have been, they have been rock solid with looking for suspicious emails and things of that nature, and it has been a real pleasure to serve them. I'd also like to thank this commission, past county commissioners, this administrator and past administrators for funding our cybersecurity initiatives. Nothing happens good in cybersecurity without that funding, and you have a big role to play with protecting a network like ours, and I'm very grateful to you for that. Thank you. It has really been the honor of my life to do this. 20 years is not that long a time compared to 35, but I can't pack any more into my And lastly, I would like to thank the people that I work with closely every day, Kevin Ellis, Lauren Humphrey, Drew Bean, Philip Urban, Marina King, and Felipe Soltero. I simply say thank you. I simply say thank you for your hard work and dedication over the years. That's it.
Brad, again, we wish you good health, safe travels, enjoy your retirement, and don't be a stranger around here, so.
Thank you.
I assume you're not going to leave your phone on at nights anymore, or we can call you at midnight or whatever?
It'll, it'll be tough to get out of that habit, but I think I'm going to master it.
All right. For those of you that don't wish to stay for an entertaining meeting, feel free to leave. Oh, yeah, and some of you need to go back to work. Thanks for coming, though. We'll move into regular business, and first thing on it today is our approval of our consent agenda, which is approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda, approval of payroll, approval of ARPA grant agreement with USD 305, approval of county commission minutes for May the 30th, and also for June the 13th, and disposition of property. Anything that wishes, the commissioners wish to withdraw or comment on? Not, I'll take a motion to approve today's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll move into our action items. Item number one.
RFA 2023-116 Local Safety and Security Equipment Grant with Michelle Weiss, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commission. I am here for the Local Safety and Security Equipment Grant. The Governor's Office has opened up this grant, and it will close on the 30th. For this application, we are looking to put in for the New Cambria siren upgrade as well as the KIP siren upgrade and an encoder for the backup dispatch center. So if you remember back in, oh, it was 2018, 2019, when we upgraded and moved forward with the upgrade of the radio system, one of the things that was added into the radio contract was upgrading our sirens from what they currently are to the 800 system. So with that, there were a couple tweaks that needed to be made. Obviously, we needed to pay to get some wiring figured out, but however, all the other cities have accepted the upgrade, except New Cambria and KIP are going to need some financial assistance, so to ensure that their sirens get brought onto the new system with us, I put in for this grant for them. It is a 15-month grant period. It is not reimbursement. If they do not cover the upgrade of the siren, I will look for other funding. So I'm here today to request that I can put in and accept if awarded this grant for an upgrade to the siren system.
And if I'm looking at this correctly, it is just that a grant, almost 100%. It's like there's a $1,200 match to this.
Yep.
Of which is shared by the City of New Cambria, Town of KIP, and the Emergency Management Department, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-116 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-116 Local Safety and Security Equipment Grant. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Item number two.
RFA 2023-123 Local Safety and Security Equipment Grant for Rural Fire District Number One with Michelle Weiss, Emergency Management Director.
And hello again, Michelle.
Hello. I am now here on behalf of Rural Fire District One. So with this Local Safety and Security Grant, there were two portions of it that were covered. One of them was interoperability and communications upgrades, which covered the siren, and also wildland fire upgrades for firefighting. So with our wonderful increase of drought conditions that we've seen over the last couple of years, the number of calls that we've had for rural fire has gone up substantially. Normally, around this time, we aren't necessarily flooding, but we do have green grass, and right now, our fuel load is a lot higher than it normally is. So because of that, Rural Fire District One is asking for the signature and acceptance of the grant to upgrade a aging tank and pump for one of their squads that they have. This district does not have the number of units that some of the others do, so we're just trying to assist with the call demand that they have in the larger district space that they cover, trying to make sure that they have the adequate equipment to cover that response. Similar to the other grant, it is a 10% match, so they will be taking less than $25,000 from their special equipment fund to cover it.
I'm impressed with, not just your department, but with all of our department heads that go out and find these grants and try to keep the minimal cost down for, to improve these things, and we're going to get, it looks like $24,000 worth of equipment, and our portion that we're going to have to match here is going to be $2,400. So that's, that's a pretty good trade-off in my books, so commissioners?
Clarify, Michelle, they're just upgrading the pump and the tank and putting it on an existing truck?
Yeah, so they got the chassis through another grant, so we're just taking a bunch of grants to hopefully build a squad.
Cool.
Anyone else? Any public comment before we approve this? I assume we all approve it. No public comment? I will ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-1, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. I approve RFA 2023-123 as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-123 Local Safety and Security Equipment Grant for Rural Fire District Number One. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll move to item number three.
RFA 2023-124 Agreement for Temporary Senior Executive Services with Hannah Bet, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. So this request for you is kind of part two of some discussions that we have had. We had a concept discussion with the commission about the idea of entering into agreements for temporary senior executive level services with firms. Went through the process of issuing a request for qualifications, and we did receive two responses. So if you remember back on June 6th, the commission voted to allow us to enter into an agreement with Strategic Government Resources, SGR. Today, this is a request to enter into a second master agreement with Shaki Consulting Services out of Overland Park. So the difference between these, these two firms, both of them really offered a unique approach to this type of concept, particularly with Shaki. They actually employ staff that has a very, very wide range of levels of expertise in some of those executive level type of positions within city and county government. So that, it just made it very attractive, and just their ideas of approaching what we were asking for complemented a lot of things that we were asking that differed from Strategic Government Resources. So, and just to clarify, the master agreement, it does not commit us to expending any funds. It just sets hourly rates, different contract-type language, until it is that the county would be able to identify a project, identify a project and identifying funding for that project, too. So the request that is in front of you is to enter into a master agreement with Shaki Consulting Services. Again, no budget impact. Any of the projects that identified would require some type of funding sources to also be paid, to also be used for the payment of those services with Shaki.
Questions or comments of Hannah regarding this situation? Is there any public comment? I see no one, so we will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-124 as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2023-124 Agreement for Temporary Senior Executive Services. Any further comments? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. That concludes our action items. We'll move into the informational items today, and we have item number one.
Jail Staffing Update with Jim Robertson, Boris Robertson, Justice Services.
Good morning, Mr. Robertson.
Good morning, commissioners. Great to see everybody again. Appreciate the hair comment. We all can relate to that. Just a couple of things I'd like to discuss this morning, once regarding the transition services that we're providing, and the other is an update on some staffing work that we've been doing in companionship with the Sheriff's Office and county administration. First off, let's talk about transition. As, as many of you know, I've been involved in this project for a number of years through a number of votes, some successful, some not, for the new building. But one of the things that I've always been impressed with, with this county, is your attention to detail and a recognition that planning takes time, and thoughtful planning takes even more time. And you've put together that planning for this project, and as you go out on-site, it's just amazing for me to see now everything in three dimension, the building coming together. It is different than we probably anticipated for many of us as we see those components come together, but I am amazed at the success of this project and how smoothly, from my perspective, I'm not sitting in your shoes, but how smoothly it has proceeded over the course of years. But there has to be a recognition that the building is just a tool. It's an environment for staff to operate. It's an environment for staff to manage inmate behavior, to interact with the public, and to provide services to the community. And so one of the things that has to occur as you begin to occupy that building is to determine how the building is going to operate. For many of us, that we think that is simply moving from one facility into another, and we'll book in individuals the same, we'll provide meal services the same, we'll do visitation the same. Well, this building was a chance to not only improve on existing operations, but to change your policies and practices to better respond to not only the building, but the needs of the staff and the needs of the inmate. We've been retained to help you move through that process, and as we did that, we helped develop a plan for those services. We developed a plan for how you're going to occupy the building, and we've been on-site a number of times over the course of the last year. We're here again today. There's two of us. Alan Richardson, who some of you might have met before, is out on-site right now, working with the transition team, and what we're really focused on over today and tomorrow is to confirm that the operational practices that have been decided upon are going to fit inside the new building. We're going to test those scenarios that were developed early on, and we're going to walk through the building, see those spaces, and talk through those operational practices. Now is the time, as the building is up, much of it is completed, to really see those spaces, understand those spaces, and to really confirm that decisions that have been made are appropriate, and to revisit those that we think we might want to do things differently. We're going to talk about the move plan for the facility. We're going to work with the transition team on a strategy, on the strategy that's been developed, and how you're going to move and occupy that building, the phases that you're going to go through to do that, and how we're going to start up operations in that, in that new facility. Companion to that is the training of staff. There's been a training plan developed by the Sheriff's Office and the transition team. We want to spend some time and revisit that training plan and see if we, if we have any different ideas and different thoughts. One of the things that I have seen many agencies do over the course of my consulting career is that they rush training, they don't provide the proper time for training to occur. Staff move into the facility, and all of a sudden, there are foreign activities that are occurring, and they can't respond to those emergencies. So training of staff and making sure that they are prepared to move into the facility is a key to the successful opening and operation, and opening's just around the corner. You know, I don't know if the date is firm, but I think you're taking occupancy or ownership of the building within a couple of months. You've got a period of time set aside to occupy before you move in, and so now is the time to revisit those things and make adjustments if necessary. So let's talk about staffing for a moment. The biggest part of the project is the long-term operational The biggest part of the project is the long-term operational cost of this facility. Construction and design typically is about 10% of the overall life cycle of a facility. If you look at it over a 20-year, 25-year period, it's the staffing cost and the operational cost that consume the biggest part of that life cycle cost. It's the biggest budget item as part of the Sheriff's Office, and it is the biggest long-term implication to the citizens of Saline County. And of that operational cost, staffing costs can be anywhere from 75% to 90% of that operational budget. So, getting a handle on the right number of staff is difficult. And so, there's a couple foundational issues that I always look at when we're hoping or trying to determine the right number of staff. First is, the building's a tool. It takes staff to operate it. Increased capacity and a more efficient facility doesn't equate to less staff. It equates to a different type of staff and a different deployment of staff. So, it's an opportunity to revisit how we do business. The building has to be flexible because your inmate population is going to change over time, the needs of the staff is going to change over time, and so you build in that flexibility, which has a direct impact to staffing. There's a couple of key things that we do in determining staffing numbers. The first is, we look at availability of staff. It is a hard concept for many of us, myself included, to fully understand the implication of a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation, and what that means in terms of staffing requirements. It's different than a nine-to-five operation that operates five days a week because it requires a different level of staffing. Not everybody's available to work seven days a week, 24 hours a day, so we have to figure in what's the availability of each employee, each class of employee, over time in looking to determine the right number of staff. This is a concept called net annual work hours. And what we did in companionship with the Sheriff's Department and County Administration is that we took a window of the last four years of average time away from work by classification of employee and averaged those out. Why did we use a four-year window? It gave us an average, a better average than a one-year snapshot, and it also took into account what occurred during COVID and those times when staffing was impacted county-wide for a number of operations. We looked at it for corrections officers, civilian staff, corporals, and all the other classifications of employees that required a filling of position when they are not available. Not every position in the building requires a person to be there all the time. Central control is a position that always has to be staffed. Somebody has to be there. The jail administrator, while a critical position, is not a position where you always have to have the jail administrator there because it is an administrative position, and so that person can take leave and not have to worry about backfilling that position. So, there's a hierarchy of positions that require always somebody to be there. Housing, booking, front desk operations are key to that. The design of the facility has a direct impact on staffing. Your sightlines, your ability to observe and manage inmate behavior affects the facility. So, your design of this facility is dramatically improved over the design of your existing facility, and therefore supports a different staffing model. The operational protocols that have been determined by the transition team, approved by the Sheriff and his command staff, will drive the staffing levels of the new facility. What we are doing today and tomorrow, myself and Alan, is that we are working with the transition team on reviewing those operational protocols to see if there's ways of doing things a little bit differently that may or may not impact staffing, that still support operational requirements. Civilian versus sworn positions is an opportunity to revisit how we deploy staff and what type of staff we have in this facility. Not everyone has to be a sworn law enforcement officer to work in that facility, but there are positions that do require that level of credentials and training. And so, we took a fresh look at that, and we took a balanced approach to saying, where can we have civilian employees providing support and services to the law enforcement staff? The good news is, is that currently you use those type of employees in the facility, and we tweaked that number a little bit in companionship with the Sheriff's Office to come up with a different figure. And the last thing that drives staffing requirements is capacity. The staffing requirements at full capacity with every bed occupied is different than the staffing requirements as what is called a operational capacity. It is my recommendation, and has been throughout the time that I've been on this project, that you never assume that you want to operate the building with every bed occupied. You need a number of vacant beds available in every housing unit so that you can move the inmates to the appropriate classification and house them accordingly, and give staff the opportunity to manage their behavior. And so, while your total capacity is 392, there are operational capacities and benchmarks that we use to determine the right staffing numbers. Over the last number of months, I have worked with County Administration and the Sheriff's Office on developing a number of different staffing models that we then worked with the Sheriff's Office on tweaking and adjusting. I know that the Sheriff has presented you numbers that are, for the most part, consistent with the numbers that we looked at and developed independently and then came together. So, we are very close on the staffing numbers. The activities that we are going to undertake today and tomorrow are going to give us a chance to revisit those staffing numbers and see if any adjustments need to be made. Once we finish that work, we'll go back, we'll take a look at staffing, we'll see if those numbers that have been presented to you for approval are consistent, if there's any significant adjustments that we need to make, and we'll bring that information back to County Administration and to the Sheriff's Office. Let me close with just one comment about opening a new facility. Not only is it a stressful time for staff, it is also a time to really rejoice in the decisions that you have made so far and to take a look at a new building that is going to be, in many respects, very welcomed to the community and the ability to really do things at a different level than you have been able to do in the past. I caution that never open a facility if you don't have the proper staffing. And defining proper staffing is the challenge that we have before us. The Sheriff's, the Sheriff's idea of proper staffing and my idea of proper staffing might be a little bit different, but it's certainly making sure that you have the right number of staff to both protect the community, protect the inmate population, protect the employees who work inside that facility, and respond to emergencies as they occur. It is going to, is going to be beneficial to establish that number that you're going to open with and what the number of staff is going to be. And I haven't talked to the Sheriff and Phil. I don't know what the staffing recruitment process has been to date, but I note that there's been a challenge nationwide with getting the right number of staff to be able to be hired for departments. It is not, it is not a job that many folks are seeking out nowadays, but is one that is certainly needed inside the community. So, anyway, we'll be here today, and tomorrow we'll have an exit meeting with County Administration and the Sheriff's Department tomorrow before we leave, and we'll strategize about our next visit when we'll be here. But again, congratulations on a, on a great project. It's gone a lot smoother than I've seen other projects, so it's a testament to you all and to the decision-making. Any questions?
Well, I have a comment. When I was elected a county official seven years ago, one of the first meetings that I attended, committee meetings that I attended, was the Jail Inmate Reduction Committee overcrowding of the jails, et cetera. When that was established, and we had a meeting after meeting after meeting and moved on, the first person that I met outside of, that wasn't a Saline County employee, was Mr. Robertson. He attended our meetings and brought us together. We reduced our, the size of the committee. Jim really put some things before us that we weren't aware of. He has been professional. He and his company have been very professional, very upfront, behind the scenes, so to speak. We haven't seen him a lot, but he's been around, and we really, your fingerprints are all over this project. There's no question about it, and we appreciate that very much. Very professional. I do have a question for you. With your participation in today's activities, you and your coworker, are there Sheriff's employees, the Sheriff himself, or anyone that is walking step-by-step with you on these processes?
Yep, we have. The transition team is going to be by our side as we go through to understand their perspective on how operations are going to be and to make sure that we understand what is intended. So, yes, the, I believe it's the full transition team, Lieutenant Hayes and the other employees that are there are going to be with us as we go through the building. So, as you know, my style is never to do anything in a vacuum. It is, it is to have that participation. So, yes, we will be with them. Hard hats, vests, I wear everything.
I'm certain there is going to be hiccups and maybe a surprise or two along the way, but I have the utmost confidence in you and the Sheriff's Department and his people that are, that are going to be on this, Lieutenant Hayes, as you mentioned, so forth. So, I have the utmost confidence in you people and your abilities to handle this. So, at that time, this time, I'll open it up for any other Commissioners who wish to have a comment or speak or...
Well, Jim, my only comment is, and I appreciate you coming and sharing with us, and I appreciate you helping with the staffing recommendations. But we have item number three here, which is our budget, and a large part of our budget is the Sheriff's Office. And the request from the Sheriff's Office had a lot of staffing involved. How, how do your recommendations feed back to our County Administrator and meet our, meet our needs of good staffing, that make it sure it's the correct staffing and at the adequate amount?
We have worked hand-in-hand with County Administration and the Sheriff's Office throughout this staffing analysis. I would, while I'm always want to leave a little wiggle room, I would offer that whatever we come up with today and tomorrow is not going to have a dramatic impact on changing that budget. We may offer a tweak here and a tweak there, but we've been actively engaged for the last four months on those numbers, so I don't see any dramatic change that would affect that overall budget. It may be something a little bit minor here and there, but we're just confirming through the walkthroughs of the building that our interpretation of operational requirements is consistent with the Sheriff's Office.
And early on, you presented us with a generic matrix of what staffing would look like as it relates to prisoner count, inmate count. Is that pretty accurate information there, or was it...
When you say early on, early on today, or...
No, no. Quite early on, when we were back into the planning stage.
Oh. Oh, wow. Boy, now you're testing my memory, which is always a challenge. I would say that as we went through the design process, we evaluated staffing at different levels of design. I can't sit here right now without going back and looking at that document and saying, is it, is it exactly what it was early on? I do know that the staffing numbers that we have developed today in companionship with County Administration and the Sheriff are the most accurate numbers that we have to date because we have better information about the design of the facility and better information about how it's going to operate.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll let you get to work at the jail site out on Pacific, so...
Alrighty.
Thanks for coming, Jim. Thank you very much.
Thanks, good seeing everybody.
We'll move to item number two.
RFA 2023-126, A Potential Solar Project.
I'm going to start with just a brief introduction, just to kind of set the stage here. And so, a couple of months ago, the Commission met in a study session to talk about county facilities and county property, where the Commission learned that we had been approached by a company about the potential of a solar project on county-owned farmland. Since then, the Commission has directed staff to bring back further information. So, today, we have a presentation from Shasta Power and the Representatives John Kopiak, Ansley Dunning, and Boris Feldman to talk to you about a potential project and just provide the Commission with some information.
Thank you for the introduction. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm really sad I didn't get the fanfare that everybody else got for the retirement. Thank you for having us. Thank you for the introduction, and just to give you a little bit of background, myself, John Kopiak, Ansley, and Max are the founders of Shasta Power. We are a solar development company. The three of us, the three main principals of the company, have quite a bit of experience in the development space. We've put together some large solar projects throughout the country. Some of the bigger ones range up to 1,150 megawatts, which is a relatively large size. We've done a lot of structuring, putting deals together, financing of projects throughout our careers, and found that this particular piece of land is an interesting piece of property, and we'd like to talk further about the potential development for a solar project. Just to give you a little bit more background on us, here's some of the projects that we've done throughout the country, pretty geographically diverse across the southern states, mostly western, as well as the eastern seaboard. As I'm sure you've seen, renewable energy is a pretty burgeoning industry, and we're definitely excited to be a part of it here. Whoa, I think I just pressed a button that I shouldn't have. Here we go. So, just a real brief introduction about the process of the development itself. Once we identify a particular parcel of land, which we've done just here in the, in the city limits, just, we go through a pretty in-depth analysis of the actual opportunity for the project. So, we do site plan, review of the soils, the potential of interconnecting to the actual electrical grid, the actual acquisition of the site itself, making sure that we have control. And then, once we get all those pieces together, we actually apply to make sure that there's enough capacity on the grid to accept the injection of that power into the grid. And you can see, our matrix here shows the actual process and the timelines associated with it. Generally speaking, projects take about two and a half to three and a half years to develop from inception to completion. So, we're here relatively early in the process, introducing ourselves, talking about the potential of using the county land for this particular endeavor. And again, if you look through the specific action items and work streams that are required to get the project done, the site analysis and site acquisition is really step one, and we intend for the project to actually start thinking about going into construction after all the environmental approvals and sort of, the environmental and permitting processes have been done, to actually start looking into construction in 2025, 2026 timeframe. Ideally, we'd like to be somewhere at the end of the construction period in 2027. So, with that, I'll hand it off to my partner, John Kopiak.
Yes, thank you, Commission, for having us. Really appreciate you giving us a few minutes to speak. I'm John Kopiak, another one of the founding partners of Shasta Power. Boris Feldman is the other founding partner, and Max Rowe is the, is the third. Just to let you know, you're looking eye to eye at the developer partners, managers, not, not a employee, per se, of a, of a big company. And so, with that, you know, we are listening to you. One of our main reasons for being here is to understand the county, be sensitive to the county's wishes, and also tell you about us and, and you know, what we'd like to build here. So, one of my questions for the... So one of my questions for the county, and this may be rhetorical, but what is the county's renewable energy plan? Does the county have a five-year plan on becoming a current in renewable energy? If not, we can help you get there. We're proposing a large solar field near the, or at the summit substation southeast of town. It's about four miles southeast of town. And, I mean, there's lots of questions for us. One of the questions is, why Shasta Power? We have a strong execution record. Boris and I have been working in the industry for the last 15 years. We recently principled a 1,500-acre site in California that involved 94 landowners and a three-mile gentai across 15 properties. If you can imagine dealing with all the California regulations, we've been through it. And so we're here to tell you that we know how to develop a large project. This one is a similar size. It would be about 150 to 200 megawatts, which could be up to 1,500 acres. What we're interested in is approximately 763 acres that we would lease from the county. But back to the slides a little bit, yes, we do have a strong execution and track record. We are developing other sites in Kansas and Oklahoma, as well as a couple of other states. But we are getting more and more familiar with Kansas as we do have two other sites that are farther along, or that are kicked off in Kansas. Some of the benefits to the county are, of course, job creation. We would employ about 300 construction workers, making good wages within the county for approximately a year for the large construction project. A lot of people ask, well, what then? Well, you're right. We don't have a lot of ongoing employment, but it would be an influx of 300 jobs for approximately a year during the construction period. And of course, the counties are usually asking the question of revenue generation. We're offering hundreds of thousands of dollars per year in rent of the 763 acres. So in addition to a higher tax base, this would be, you know, industrial space, if we can, if you would allow us to convert the ag land to an industrial zoned area, that would certainly boost your tax revenues in addition to the hundreds of thousands of dollars in rent. One of my original questions is, what is the county's five-year plan for renewable energy? And why do we need renewable energy? Well, I'm sure you're familiar with all of the disruptions in the electrical grid in the last 10 years, especially the last few years. I'm from Oregon, and we have wildfires every year. And they usually take down our power lines. And so we have to figure out how we're going to survive for the next couple of days when the power goes out. And so, you know, Kansas is not immune from power surges and disruptions as the rest of the country is going through. And having a local, large power supply is in your best interest if you're interested in having the lights on more often than not and helping fix the climate solution. We'll of course be working with Evergy and ultimately be selling to the Southern Power Pool, which is, you know, a large utility and would feed power to Celine County and across Kansas, but primarily for the local residents of the city. A little bit more about the specifics of the property. I'm sure you all know that the property that we're interested in was granted to the county some years ago. And it's 763 acres. We're working with local, with the neighbors. We have some agreements already in place with the neighbors of the county land, so that we'll be expanding onto their properties as well. And we don't yet know the size of the solar farm. The range is 1,050 acres on up to 1,450 acres. And so, yes, it is a large facility. But sometimes you have to think large to get things done in order to power up Celine County with renewable power. And I'm free to, I'm open to have questions if you're wondering, why wind? Or, you know, is solar the answer? I'm obviously an advocate for solar because it doesn't have bird kills. It's less visible from a distance. And it keeps, well, it's a smaller footprint. While it is 1,000 acres, this would be about 150 megawatts, which would power approximately 3,800 homes. So it would power Celine, or a large part of the county. This is the general location of the site. We did not get a really close-in view of it. Frankly, it's fairly sensitive right now as we're working out contracts with a lot of the neighboring properties. We have some in place now, but we are working with many of the neighbors. The substation is at the corner of South Simpson and East McReynolds Road. It's probably the largest substation for 30 miles. But again, we are, we do have some other sites going. One in Pittsburgh, another near Seward, Great Bend. There are some large other substations that we're also developing. And frankly, a little bit farther, or definitely farther along, we have the land positions and other details in those other sites. Does anybody have any questions about the location of the, yes?
Well, quite frankly, it's like this is one of those situations where it's like I was, I'm from the area out by Great Bend that you're from originally. So to me, that's another one of those deals. My questions that I made down over the weekend was, why here in this county here? Because I got a couple of deals, because I'd already, quite frankly, I am completely against the one in Great Bend to Cheyenne Bottoms. Because being there, and when you make some statements about the situation here where it's not visible there, when you're talking about this many acres and what you're doing there, it's a wrong place at the wrong time. To me. But that's just a personal deal. I don't know what everybody else does. But I've studied that situation out there. I didn't realize that this is one of your sites.
Oh, no, that, I don't think, which location in Great Bend are you talking about?
The one out by Cheyenne Bottoms.
That's not us.
That's not you.
Correct. We're closer to Seward.
Well, when you said Great Bend, I'm thinking Seward's out west of Great Bend.
Yes.
Larnard, okay. Different area. Thank you.
You know your geography. Seward's a little teeny place.
Yeah, it is. Good restaurant, though. But anyway, and you just made another statement, is that where Celine County benefits? The electricity that comes from this here, and it's being sold to Evergy?
Yes.
Okay, so how does Celine County benefit from, I know we get our deal from, how would Celine County know that they're getting electricity or even think that they're getting electricity from this deal here?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's a great question. So generally, what happens is when you generate the energy, it goes into the grid.
Yes.
The grid at large.
Right.
And the electrons get sent to wherever they're needed. So there isn't really a way to say, I use the electron that came from this particular, you know, solar system. You're just using the grid's power.
Yes.
But given that we're this close to the city and given that we're generating a significant amount of energy and injecting it into the location right outside town, 99% chance that those electrons are flowing directly into your house. So hopefully, that was an easy explanation. But you also asked, why here?
Yes.
And one of the big things that we try and work through as developers is identifying the location of a place on the grid that we can inject the power into. So a lot of times, you know, the grid is very sort of congested. And finding those places where the injection of that power can take place is kind of difficult. So we've identified this particular substation as being one of those locations where the injection can take place, and that's why we're interested.
Okay. Another question, do we want to wait till after this thing before I have other questions?
Yeah, we certainly want to have an offline discussion. Another question is, why here? I don't know if you're aware of the magnitude of renewable energy across the country. Currently, California is 50% powered by renewable power. And it has a mandate to be fully renewable by 2040. Oregon also has a mandate to be fully renewable by 2040. And so some of these huge states, New York, New Mexico, Hawaii, many states already have a mandate to be 100% renewable. And in the next, well, by 2040. And frankly, to be, to meet that demand, they have to be contracted by 2035. And so 2035 is not that far away. They need to get going. And frankly, Kansas needs to get going to keep up with some of these other states that are leading. And so whether, I hate to say this, whether or not you like renewable power, it's happening across the country. And we need to, in my opinion, kind of get on board and let the coal and oil, you know, kind of wean ourselves off of some of the old fossil fuels.
If I could just add a comment here, aside from the fact that, you know, renewable standards are becoming more and more sort of prevalent throughout the country, what's really driving the expansion of renewables is the price. It is, as of today, the most cost-effective way of delivering electricity. And if you look at the number of new facilities that are being built, more than 90% of them are renewable, usually in the form of solar. And the reason isn't because people are, you know, gung-ho about green energy or what have you. It's simply just because of the fact that it's the most cost-effective way to generate electricity today.
As this process moves on, from your experience, who comes to us against your project? Against your project? To the commission? I mean, like, who are we going to hear from that says, oh, don't, let's not do that?
That's a great question.
Move to the microphone just a little bit more, please.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Well, it wasn't me, but I mean, we have a television crew, and, you know, we need to get it out there.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so, you know, the general kind of pushback that we get is usually from folks who just don't want it near their residence. You know, something about the visual nature of it. But again, as we said, you know, the location of the project is very much driven by the capacity of the grid and the grid's ability to handle it. And so that's one of the big decisions on siting and why we place it where we do.
And your points that you've made today make sense to me. I'm okay with everything. I just was kind of wondering, okay, this seems, it's not as easy sometimes as it seems. Somebody's going to come to us at some point.
Well, that's it. And another thing about the siting is, is we look for a site that didn't involve any transmission lines. Some counties, of course, have different feelings about solar, but nobody likes a large transmission line going across their state.
Right.
And this would, this particular location would not have any transmission lines. And it would largely be on county land, which I think would be a large benefit to the county. I don't know what you're renting it out for farming, but I'm quite sure we can beat that and keep up with inflation as well.
Well, you mentioned the amount of acres that you need versus the amount of acres that we own are not the same. And I assume, when I look at this picture of all the solar panels, I guess you would call them, and the acres that you're needing, I mean, that's close to a couple of square miles.
That's true. It could be that large. We have agreements with the neighbors to expand it to be that size. Well, those are forthcoming. We have some agreements. We're also looking for new agreements with the neighbors to make it approximately 1,000 acres.
Okay, so you're looking at approximately 1,000 acres, and you're starting with our 760. So really, you have an agreement for, or close to 250 acres is what it amounts to, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And Mr. Shadwick's right, we're going to hear from them out there. We do on a daily basis for various things. But I think this would be a project, and just like he said, I'm not against these types of projects. I understand why we need it. I'm not sure, and now I understand why you picked Celine County, Kansas, because of the facility that's already out there. But obviously, I'm not very versed on this project. But that's where I stand so far.
Yeah, but these are good questions.
We have already heard, I mean, I have already heard from some people, and, you know, some of our people out there, you know, I think the problem I have with it, and a problem as I've seen, you know, heard so far, you know, you can't eat solar panels. And you take away 1,000 acres of ag land and trying to feed people and trying to keep agriculture out there right now, you know, you're not going to make any more. You can make all the solar panels you want, but they're never going to make any more ag land. And like I said, 1,000 acres is really hard to swallow to, you know, to take up that much agriculture land for a solar farm.
We hear you, and you're not wrong, right? That we depend on the farmers to keep us fed every day. And we don't pretend that that's not going to be an impact. But the fact of the matter is that we won't actually start building this thing for another few years. I think the best plan, or at least the timing of this, is that we would wait until the expiration of the existing lease and the existing crop. And then I think that that's the point that we would actually start going into construction. But, you know, look, it's a real concern, but so is energy, right? If you turn on your AC in the middle of the summer and it's not working because there isn't enough supply, that's an issue too. So, look, they are competing interests. And we, you know, we think that this is a reasonable way to use the land. And, you know, there could be another way to think about it.
Right. Another issue is, a lot of the corn that's grown is for ethanol. And we're now transitioning from oil to energy, electricity. And so this would be an electricity provider instead of perhaps an ethanol field.
A quick question. You mentioned in your presentation about battery storage. And I would assume you have your ears to the ground and know that there is a company looking to put in a large battery storage facility a rocks throw from this?
Yes. Yeah, we are aware, and this would be in conjunction with that project. They would not compete against each other. Well, they would compete against each other in the market, but not necessarily in the way that we are going about our development process.
But you would utilize their facility for the storage of this electricity?
Potentially. There are scenarios where, you know, we're generating the power and their facility is storing that power.
And one other question that I have is, there is a life expectancy of these panels. I've heard anywhere from 10 to 20 years. And with technology and everything that continues to improve, new panels will come along that are more efficient, do a better job, make more electricity, whatever. What happens to 1,000 acres of solar panels at the end of their life? We don't want them in our landfill.
Yeah, yeah. It's a great question. So the actual useful life of solar panels is between 25 and 35 years. So they, once you put them out there, they continue to generate for a very, very long time. Now, at the end of their useful life, just like any other product, they do have to be removed and remediated. You know, what we do now is we essentially take them apart, break them down to their most basic ingredients, and recycle them. So there is a recycling capacity that's available for these kinds of projects, and that's what we intend to do. There will be a very thorough de- There will be a very thorough decommissioning plan if we do move forward. And that'll detail all of the components of what the decommissioning will look like once we're ready to move forward.
I appreciate it, because these are the kind of questions we're going to be asked, is if and when this moves forward.
I would ask our county administrator at this point, moving forward, I assume that, you know, we could get a consensus right now and say, we're not interested. But I don't think that, that three of us are not interested. I don't know enough about it to say, I'm interested or I'm not interested. Well, I am interested, I guess I would say. What, what is the process that we need to go through to, without stringing these guys along? What do we do? Do we ask for more information? Do we check with Lando? What's the process here? I'm kind of lost with that part of it.
Well, I would say there are multiple processes. With regard to, so there's the lease process on the ag, Oliver ag land, right? So, that is one thing that we would have to bring back action to the commission on to say, okay, you need to make a determination of what you want to do with that land. And then, there would likely be a process, there has been in the past, a process for folks to submit proposals for, you know, growing crops or running cattle. So, there would be a process for folks to submit to build a solar farm on that, if that was what the commission decided to do. These folks are here just because they approached us. We don't know that they're the best game in town. We would want to get the best value for the taxpayer dollar. So, we would want to solicit some type of competitive process for that. And then there is the planning and zoning process as well. And so, Tim Hamilton is here. One of the speakers mentioned the fact that this is ag land and energy generation is typically considered an industrial use. So, Tim could speak, I assume this would not be a CUP. This would probably be a complete rezone and...
Well, this would actually be...
On the mic.
Before we do that, before we do that, Oliver ag land that we're talking about, is it pasture land or is it crop-producing land?
I think this piece is mostly pasture off of...
And that's one of the things that bothers me is because I just want to...
Well, let me get my question answered first, Roger.
I was going to help.
Oh, all right. Tell us what it is then.
Well, a lot of it is farmland and part of it is pasture. But a lot of it across the road on the east side is a farmer that had it, has put in trees, I mean, for different types of windbreaks there that he's... And that's one of my questions was, is if you come in and take over this land, are you going to tear down the windbreaks that the farmers have put in there for all of this? You'd have, almost have to.
Yeah. We would try to work around the natural sort of flow of the area. So, if there are existing natural features, we would try and go around them in our building process. So, if there is existing trees, generally, we try to avoid them. If there are creeks or streams, we try to have a setback away from those natural features. And, yeah, so, it would really be borne out in, further in the design.
And another quick thought that I have in regards to the Oliver ag land, or the county-owned land, is the fact that perhaps there are some people out there who really want to, you know, they want their land to do that, and they want to make the money off of it. Why would we go into competition with them? I mean, if they're in favor of having it on their land, then that makes it a lot easier decision for me, rather than take the, which I know the Oliver ag land is, has some stipulations behind it on what it can be used for, I think, as it was donated, so...
Well, the land is to be used, so I will say a couple of things. One, the, the language in the will, Councilor Montoya and I have been over this, the language in the will is advisory, not mandatory, on the commission. But the wishes of Mr. Hag were to use this for promotion of agriculture. And so, there are two ways to think about that. One is to use the land for agriculture. The other is to use the land to get the most money out of it you can and put it back into things like we currently do with the scholarships, the support for women in ag, the support for the county fair, all those certain types of things that we, that we spend the money on, so...
From that end of it, I would love to have that income. But is that the best use? I'm not certain. I mean, I think about the wind towers, wind turbines that are all over Kansas. The people that have them on their land, obviously, they love it. They like that income. The people that live five miles away that look at them don't like it. So, but they don't have any wind towers on their land either. So, anyway, that's, I'm getting off the subject here.
Just, just one point that I wanted to make, and we understand that, you know, there's a, an interest in farming and promoting farming. I often say that solar power is like farming the sun. You know, you put the panels out there and you collect the set, the solar rays, and you convert them into energy. So, it, you know, it's, it's just a way of sort of reframing the fact that we're making energy, but we're truly farming, just a different kind of output than your crops.
One other question that directly would impact our budget potentially, and that is our roads that are, that are surrounding these areas. What type of an impact? Is there continually maintenance going on, big trucks, et cetera, that are going to work the roads over? How does that, where's that at?
Yeah. The only impact on the roads would be during the construction process, where we would need some heavy machinery to come in, bring in the equipment, bring in the construction equipment that would be required to put the project together. But then after they're done, there is no larger impact. So, it's a, it's a temporary impact.
I'll let us get back to what we brought Mr. Hamilton to the microphone for.
Basically, the process would involve, it would be a two-tier process. It would be a possible rezoning to an I-3 heavy industrial. And if it's heavy industrial, then one of those under, that would, it might require a conditional use permit, because there are some uses in heavy industrial that do require a conditional use. So, you're looking at, and both of those, both the conditional use and a rezoning, could be heard at the same public hearing. Right now, though, currently, our zoning regulations do not address solar. They do address wind power. And so, what we're going to do is, now that we've gotten our comprehensive plan updated, we're moving on to updating our zoning regulations now and going through that and making sure it coincides with the adopted plan. One of the things that we're going to be looking at this year is, is trying to see about getting some language put in the zoning regs that mirrors what we have already for the wind and put it in there for solar. So, you'd have solar and wind both being addressed in the regulations. And it would break down that process. As far as specifics as to whether or not, you know, which zoning district, you know, I-3, I-1, or whatever would, would be most appropriate, I would leave that up. That would be a discussion for our planning commission later on this year, probably talking to them about it and getting direction from them, because I don't, I want to get their input as well before I, you know, say for certain about the finalized process. I know it will involve a conditional use, though.
I'll ask our administrator once again, is it appropriate for me to ask my fellow commissioners if there are three people who don't want to pursue this? Is this an appropriate time to ask that? I mean, because we're going to waste time if, and their time, our time, if there are three who don't want to pursue this at all. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think we need to make, the commission needs to make a decision whether to keep going down this road or not. You know, as Hannah said in her opening comments, we're just, we're just here to provide you information because you ask for it. And staff does not have a recommendation for or against this. But this was something that we were approached about, a use of the land that could potentially generate more revenue, and so, here we are, so...
That part of it brings a lot of questions. But I will then ask, is there, are there three commissioners who do not want to hear anymore about this, don't want to go any further, want to, are there three that wish to not pursue this?
I'm interested in pursuing it.
Well, Mr. Chair, I have some more questions I'd like to get answered before I can answer that question. I mean, I'm just...
That's, that's fair.
Okay.
That's fair.
And...
So, I don't hear three people, so I guess we're interested.
Well, it's great to hear.
Go ahead, Roger.
I'm not.
You got it.
Okay. One of my other questions is here is, the weather conditions out here in Kansas, I know that you're talking about Arizona and California and blah, blah, blah. Out here where you have ice storms and causes a lot of power outages, is, if you have a two-inch ice buildup on the solar panels, does that affect your solar assumption at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
It impacts the ability of the panels to generate during that period of time. But what we found is that the panels themselves are very robust and can continue to generate power even under very extreme conditions. So, high winds, even hurricane strength, you know, the panels themselves will continue to operate and deliver power to the grid.
Here are the obligation of the county in the future. I mean, what happens once you build your solar farm here? What obligations does the county have to upkeep the land or anything at all?
So, no, we would be responsible for maintaining the land and making sure that everything is operating smoothly. I will make a comment, you know, there's a question about sort of the zoning is aspect of it and whether it should go through a CUP process, which obviously, I think it must. But the, what we've seen done in other projects is, if you retain the agricultural status of the land, there is a potential of, you know, after the useful life of the project, removing the panels and re-establishing farming on the property.
Right. I think what you're getting at is the decommissioning plan. So, before we even start construction, we have a plan for how it will come down and be returned to its previous state. And that includes soil density, you know, removing all of the metal, everything about it will be returned to the natural state, unless the county decides, hey, we like this, let's go another 35 years, or something like that. But, but as, before we start, we have a decommissioning plan that would be bonded with a much greater company for, for the eventual decommissioning of the site.
Can you tell me where your solar panel, panels that you've been utilizing in these other areas, where they're manufactured at?
It really depends on the project. We source from a number of different manufacturers. One of the folks that we're working with right now is for solar, and they manufacture their products in Arizona.
And Ohio.
If we were to say, we are not interested in renting our land for this project, would that kill it? Or would you say, we're going to pursue it and look for other additional adjoining land that might be available?
That's a good question. It would certainly be disappointing for us. Maybe, well, since the substation is on county land, we would very much like to have some kind of access to that substation. So, it's possible we could, we could build a site that is not entirely on county land, but maybe partially, so that we could access the substation sufficiently.
Did I hear you say the substation was on, on county land?
That's right.
I guess I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, to the north, so it's, it was originally county land, and I think Evergy bought the, a couple acres or what have you.
Right.
But, but getting to it is, is difficult for us without the county's cooperation.
Well, Chair, I think, I think there's also verbiage in the Oliver Hag will that talks about conservation. And I, we are so early into this that I am not going to say I'm against it. I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to get some knowledge, to understanding, how will this impact the citizens of Sling County? What are we talking about revenue to help keep everyone's property taxes low? There's so much information out there that we don't have, that I think it's way too early to say, no, thank you.
I appreciate those comments, and I now have my consensus that I want, and that is, because I echo Commissioner Shadwick and Commissioner Wies's positions, that I want to hear some more about it too. So, we're not going to kill this thing at this stage. Again, it's going to take somebody else, it's going to take someone else to, to get us all the information that we need and how the process is going to flow and therefore, so, and I guess, I hope I don't step on too many toes, but we don't get a lot of media coverage right here in Salona, Kansas. But I'm sure Mr. Hay pointed out, somebody already knew about it, that, so I'm sure we'll be hearing that part of it pretty early on, even though they don't know what it's at all about either, so...
And I also don't want to see us get too far into the project where we can't turn back either. I mean, into the...
Well, I think the whole thing is going to start, and Commissioner Wies has pointed it out, we need to really have a deep clarification of the Oliver Hag contract and what that, what that really means. Is this conservation of the ground, you know, et cetera? Is this agriculturally related? We need to have those opinions put before us before we say no to the, to that particular land. The project can pursue, can proceed after that, even without our land, as you are indicating, if you can get other landowners to go for it.
Right.
And it goes through the, the process of planning and zoning.
And there, if I may add, we, you know, if you said, hey, we could have solar on, say, a good portion of it, but leave another part of it as, you know, some other designation, that, that's another possible compromise.
Well, that's a, again, we're going back to the contract, because it's either, it's either yes or no on our land, as far as I'm concerned, because, but the contingent upon that, that contract and how that was deeded and what the will says.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, my, every conversation that I have had with Councilor Montoya, I think it is ultimately going to be up to the five of you to say yes or no.
Perfect.
But I can, I can go back and, and get more clarification, but I think that interpretation is pretty broad.
All right.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and your consideration. Looks like you may have another question.
Just had one, one more question. I want, I want to ask, because I Googled your deal just to find out what you guys are about, and it's like, are you guys, I just want to ask this to get it out of my, my mind. Are you guys actually a solar company or a money management deal, investments for people?
So, the way that we finance the projects and the development of the actual assets themselves is through fundraising. So, it's, we, we use high net worth individuals to finance the actual development of the asset.
Okay. So, it is like a really a government subsidized deal that you guys are bringing in and it's all good?
It's not. You know, every company gets their money somewhere.
Yes.
And we get it from high net worth investors. And, and, but we are the actual developers of the site. We'll be, we wear belt hats, but that's a great question.
Well, I just wanted to find out, because I wanted to get that answered off the top of my mind, where it's like, okay, are you guys an investment firm or actually a solar farm people?
It's a, it's a fair question, and we are the actual developers.
Okay.
Yeah, John and I are the ones working on the paperwork and making sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Great. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen and ladies, thank you for, for attending our meeting, and I'm not sure where I'm at with my knowledge of this, but it's interesting for certain.
Answer the all but questions. Yeah, it's a good deal. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move forward. Item number three.
Recommended budget for 2024 with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So, as you're aware, because it's that time of year, we have been going through the budget process and previously presented to the commission the requests from all the various departments. And then we had a study session, and you had opportunity to ask some questions of departments and make some comments. And so, today, I am presenting to you the best... And so today, uh, I am presenting to you, uh, the best recommendation that I could come up with about, um, what to do with those departmental recommendations. And I guess the best way to summarize my recommendation is that I don't think anybody is going to be happy. Uh, I don't think that I have requested, or I, I don't think I've recommended, uh, the full ask from any department that, um, you know, aside from those who didn't ask for anything new. Uh, I have, uh, not recommended all the positions that any department asked for. Uh, I, um, I've made a lot of, uh, reductions in things that, that folks asked for. And yet, still, at the end of the day, uh, it results in a, uh, tax increase of approximately one mil. Um, it is taking us, in terms of the tax rate, 24 would be back to where we were for 22, but of course, uh, property values have grown from 22 to 24. And so it is effectively a, uh, 7.8% tax increase for the average, uh, the average property owner. So, uh, I'd be happy to answer questions about any of the recommendations, why things are in or out. Uh, but this is really just an opportunity for the commission to have a look at, um, the recommendation, not asking for any action today. Uh, the next step in the process is for any of the departments, uh, to file an appeal of my recommendation. Uh, if they do, we will hear those on July 11th. We will also need on July 11th to determine whether to, uh, hold a revenue neutral rate hearing, uh, and get that information to the county clerk's office. Uh, and then we would come back, uh, for actual, uh, nitty gritty, so to speak, on July 18th and, uh, potentially July 25th in preparation for the final public hearing in August. So, um, that is where we are in the process and, like I said, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Phil, a couple of pretty, uh, broad questions. Uh, you said this result, as you're proposing it, is a 7.8% increase. Originally, uh, the, when we had all the requests before us, before anything was talking, what was that, what would that percentage of increase been?
Uh, it would have been 16.66.
16.66. And one mil is what, 650,000 or is, I'm rough?
Uh, one mil will be, uh, 702,000 for next year, subject to, uh, $6 million in outstanding, um, uh, pending exemptions. Thank you. I'm trying to come up with the word in my head, pending exemptions. So effectively 696,000.
Well, the, uh, the taxpayer doesn't want to hear, he, he wants to hear the 0%, I think, most of them. They, they know that they're smart enough not to understand that that's not going to happen. Uh, you know, the, uh, cost of living in and of itself is, you know, four point something percent, I think it is nationwide, something like that. Uh, so, I mean, obviously that has to figure into the equation, uh, wages, et cetera. And you're right, nobody's going to be happy, but I'm a lot more positive about this than I was when it was originally proposed with the, uh, 16.66%.
Well, this is my ninth year going through the budgets and I just want to, um, comment. Um, I think it's maybe the smoothest, um, the easiest to read that I've done over the nine years and I want to thank you for your leadership on that. Um, I want to thank you for your leadership, just trying to get it down to 7%. And I'm not saying that we can't get it down more, but, uh, but, you know, you didn't come to us with recommendations for 16% and you had to take some tough stances against some staff members and, and I appreciate that, so. Um, Mr. Chair, I mean, I've got like three or four questions. Is today the day to do it or is it a study session that we do that or?
I've got the same, same question. I'm, I'll ask you that question or I'll ask any of the rest of it. Do we want to start dissecting this?
I'd be happy to, to delve into anything commissioners have questions about today. And then, like I said, we will be back again, um, possibly the 11th, definitely the 18th. Um, so we, we will have opportunities for further questions, but I'd be happy to.
Well, I'll just keep some of my comments brief at least.
Hold on just a second. I, I, I want to say that I haven't had a chance to, to review this. Uh, I was out of town Friday and Monday that was closed. I have not looked at what's being proposed. Uh, I'm definitely going to have some more questions, however, uh, probably some questions that we can ask right now that are, that could be answered too, so.
Help the public understand about the pending exemptions and why that is going up and what our role is. We maybe don't have a role in saying no, do we? I mean, is this just?
Uh, the pending exemption, I'll, I'll maybe do an audible to the clerk as well, but my understanding is that the, the, the largest pending exemption is one particular project where it, um, an IRB has been filed but not finalized. And that's, um, actually on a, a large industrial project, economic development project in the community that the commission, um, is well aware of and is, has previously, um, you know, given the city the go-ahead to, to do that IRB, but it has not yet been finalized. And so that's why it's still on the rolls at this time.
Can I add to that? I, I do believe it has been, because the city approves, um, an IRB application and then it goes to the state for an approval. I believe, if I remember correctly, Sean said, the county appraiser said that it was, had been approved, but it hasn't done, it hasn't got through the paperwork process and made it from his office to our office, but, so we will not be getting those, that money for tax dollars.
Right. That, that having been said, though, the clerk did remind me as well that typically because of, um, personal property, late filings, typically our, uh, assessed valuation inches up a little bit between, uh, the June values and the November values. Uh, it probably won't inch up $6 million worth, but, but it should be less of an impact than that full amount, ideally.
I've got just one question. I just got one question on, um, and being new to this process, you may have already discussed this in years past or anything, but, um, on page 88, under the Health Department, maybe you can help me understand why there is a line item for $32,086 for foreign travel?
Um, we perform foreign travel immunizations and that's, um, the Health Department, my understanding is if you don't get your, say you're going to Africa for a safari, you have to have certain vaccinations in order to travel over there. My understanding is if you don't go to the Seline County Health Department, you have to go to Wichita, Kansas City. We are kind of the only game in the foreign travel immunization, uh, for this part of the state.
Okay, that's a little bit clearer then. I mean, it isn't foreign travel.
It is not our staff going on a junket, no.
I looked at $32,000 and I'm like, how do I explain to them out there that we got?
No, it is, it is not our staff going off to Bali, I can tell you that.
Yes, thank you.
As far as, go ahead, you're, you're next.
I've got a question, I, I don't know. Are we going to have a study session where we all get out our red pencils and, and go line by line on this or are we going to, uh, verbalize it now? And, and my question was, I, I enjoyed reading this because I had a lot of the things that your mind was thinking I was in cohorts with. A couple of things that came up was, one, listening to Jim Robertson and, and the needs of the sheriff and, and, uh, what, what you're, uh, presenting here, uh, does that mesh? And are those positions what are needed? Uh, the second was, uh, I, I wrestled with the thought of, of hiring two, uh, two, uh, county attorneys at this time, uh, knowing you can't fill one like have three empty spots that we're, that we're funding, so, uh, I, I really think we could get into this and maybe scratch out a couple hundred thousand or more, but, uh, if we want to go that way.
I guess good idea. So, uh, so that sounded like three questions to me. First, um, will, will you all have a study session? So I will say, um, that's certainly a possibility. There's no reason not to do that. Um, if that's the will of the commission, we can definitely schedule that. Um, be happy to do that. The, the second one was on the sheriff's staffing and, um, the sheriff has stuck around, perhaps in anticipation of this question. So, um, the sheriff requested 11 positions, uh, for the 24 budget and I have recommended five of those. I recommended, uh, the corporal, I recommended, um, three booking officers, uh, I recommended, uh, one of the two maintenance folks. And, um, and the, the reason for that is, um, I, the other positions that he requested, um, so, so that was the five, the, the corporal, the three booking officers and one of the two maintenance folks. The other ones he requested were, uh, another custodial position and then, um, COs and five, five additional COs. And, um, the reason I did not recommend the, the COs is because, um, my understanding of where we are currently is that, and, and as, as Mr. Robertson said, this could change slightly, but my understanding of where we are currently is that if we had those additional five positions, um, we would be able to supervise an entire jail full of people, 340 inmates. And our current count is not 340, it's more like 240. And so, um, in conversations with the sheriff, um, he understood that I was not going to recommend those, but he intends to request them again, uh, because he will need them eventually. And I, and I completely support him. He will need them eventually. I don't believe he needs them for 2024. I, I think he's probably okay with me making that recommendation for 2024, but I think he'll come back again in 2025 and 2026 and, until he gets them. And be happy to defer to you if you have anything else to add on that. And then while he's coming up, the, the third question was about the county attorney's office. And, um, I struggled with this one. Um, I had a conversation with the county attorney. He's, he said he absolutely must have one new attorney, uh, just to keep up. He really needs two attorneys. He requested two attorneys and a paralegal. My thought process simply was there are two new criminal courtrooms that justifies two new attorneys. Um, he has staffing challenges like many other departments do, but he was able to, I mean, there was a period of time where he was able to fill everything before people started resigning again, so. Uh, that's, that, that was the thought process that went into that. Sheriff, anything to?
Before we get into that, I, I just want to comment on what you said. I totally agree with you on, on, uh, the staffing part of it, to, to, to make those cuts. What, what I would rather see though is rather than you say, Roger, you're only going to get one corporal, three booking officers, whatever, I would like for him to make that decision on which one of those that he, where he wants to cut it. The numbers I agree with totally. Uh, I, I think it should be up to Roger as to which positions that he's cutting and equate to the dollars.
We, we had that discussion.
Okay, I'm good with it then.
And he's, he's.
I'm good with that then.
He's in the right wheelhouse and, and I think the, what he's saying is, I totally agree with. I, I'm good with the cut.
I probably should have asked that before I said.
Cuts need to be made, I'm good with that. What I just want to make sure stays in front of you guys and you guys want to always be here. And so, is that in order to staff that jail as it grows, we're going to need the staff to run it. We didn't do that where we're at. We did the, we ran through the same thing in 94, 95 when we opened this place. It never got staffed to the level it's supposed to be and we suffered for years and it was hard on our staff. Being understaffed is really hard running jail, so we're, we're good with where we're at, with the count where it's at today. If things change with the courts or things change with the public and this, the jail we have fills up, I'm going to need those staff members. I just don't want to put my staff through what the staff has gone through in the past, so. That's, that's why I told Phil, that's fine. If, if we don't fill those positions this year, I'll still be back asking for them next year.
And I think this commission is sympathetic with that position.
I know you guys are. My thing is, you won't always be here and neither will I. So I don't want to pass it on to someone understaffed.
What, what I would appreciate, Sheriff, is knowing your commission and what you're working with. Come to us with what you need, not what you're afraid you won't get in the future because we're being receptive to the taxpayers. You know who you're working with here.
Right.
When that changes.
That's why I'm standing before you right now saying I'm very good with the decision that Phil and I came to.
And I, I like hearing that. Explain the booking officers. Are you?
The reason.
I don't know how your shifts really work and.
They, they work a 10-hour shift. The reason that we need more is we're going to use them in control as well, so we don't have to pay a higher paid corrections officer to work in control. There'll be a correctional officer in control and a booking officer in control. It's going to take two to run the control center for that, for that facility. It's cheaper, it's cheaper to hire a booking officer and they're typically easier to hire because they don't have contact with inmates. Um, so it, it would allow us to hire some, some staff members, maybe, um, with some mobility issues, you know, if you have someone that's, uh, it would oper, it would open opportunities that we can't offer right now. So, um, that's kind of the thought behind it. It is a little bit of, a little bit of cost savings, but it also, that's why we're calling them booking officers, but they're really more of a, yes, they'd be booking officers, they'd be helping at the window, they'd be running control in the jail, but they wouldn't be having hands-on contact with inmates. It just expands the booking officer position to not be simply at the booking counter asking booking questions and doing data entry. It gives them the opportunity to do other things and it also opens us up to, uh, a, a better, a better cross-section of staffing.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, not budget-related, but I want to remind those in attendance and those that are watching at home, November the 2nd, circle the date. That is the date we cut the ribbon. We're scheduled to cut the ribbon for the new jail. I believe it's November the 2nd.
Well, actually, we will be cutting the ribbon on October 31st and we'll be having the business after hours on November 2nd.
Okay.
That whole week.
Circle the whole week then and, you know, just keep visiting the jail.
Yes.
Swade aside, thank you, Roger.
Back to the budget just for a second. Um, in looking at the Health Department, their expenses have gone up, uh, over 50% in just a few years, since 2019. Um, I, I know that Health Departments don't cash flow, so that's not, that's not my concern. I, I understand that, but that's a pretty, um, big increase just since 2019. Um, as a broader question, you know, what are we mandated by the state to provide through the Health Department? And what do we provide because over the years the community has needed them to do?
Yeah, so the Health Department does have a pretty hefty increase in expenditures from '23 to '24. It also has a pretty hefty increase in non-ad valorem revenues as well. Their grants are going up considerably. Um, so if you look at the actual amount of tax dollars flow, uh, ad valorem tax dollars flowing to the health fund, uh, it is almost exactly the same next year as this year. I think it's $10,000 difference. Um, that is higher than it was a couple of years ago. We actually reduced their mil levy one year because they had so many grants. Um, and then the state, when you do that, the state comes back and. the state, when you do that, the state comes back and dings you because, uh, there's a maintenance of effort requirement where counties are supposed to, uh, fund their health departments in order to draw down state grants. So, it, it sort of backfired on us when we did that, so that's why we're trying to keep the mil levy for the Health Department steady. In general, there are only a few services of the Health Department that are required. The, um, the thing that is, that is required by state law is really, uh, disease investigation, um, that, that sort of, you know, tuberculosis control, tho, those sorts of things. We're not required to provide, uh, foreign travel immunizations, for example. We're not required to provide, um, uh, technically, we're not required to provide WIC services, uh, tho, uh, those could be provided by, um, a contract with another agency. We're not required to provide home health, we're not required to provide, uh, childcare licensing. Many, uh, counties rely on KDHE to do childcare licensing, so those are all services that have, uh, been added over time in response to community demand.
And I guess I'll just get back to my concerns about home health. You know, again, I understand that health departments don't cash flow, but home health probably should, or we probably shouldn't be in the business and let the private, uh, market that is providing those services right now do it. But that's 300 and some thousand dollars right there, 300, 354,000 dollar loss from home health every year, so, just, just a, a point that I'd like to make to my fellow commissioners.
Phil, you mentioned, um, uh, alternative dates that we can further discuss this. Uh, what, what, could you go back to those?
So, as I said, um, if there are any budget appeals, those are scheduled to be heard on July 11th and that is also the date that we would, uh, determine whether to adopt a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And then, uh, we're next scheduled to have a conversation on, uh, the 18th of July and then again on the 25th.
I would like to see, and I'll throw it out there to my fellow commissioners, that I, I would like to see, uh, either a special meeting or, I think a special meeting is the only way we're going to get this done, the way I'd like to see it done, and that is where we just sit down and start right with the very first one on, you know, on these and go through it ourselves. That's what I would like to see. Does that appeal to you, my fellow commissioners?
I think it'd be helpful to Commissioner Hay.
Yes.
To kind of delve into more of the detail that maybe we take for granted that we know.
Rather than just say, okay, we're going to talk about the Sheriff's Department, I mean, just write an order that you've got it here, that, I mean, let's just go through it and, uh, I challenge my fellow commissioners to go home and do the homework, look at this, write your questions down regarding each department and then, and we can all discuss it at that point.
I will get back to my original comment that he's gotten us closer to the finish line by his work over the last couple of weeks.
Big time, but, but we've never, this is the final step as far as I'm concerned, that we, we still need, uh, you know, the department heads get their, the opportunity for their appeals. I, I want to have my chance for an appeal, on what I think is, you know, and we've never really done that.
Right.
We have never really done that.
Absolutely, so we can look at something between the 11th and this, and the 18th, maybe the 13th, 14th or 17th. I'll ask, um, staff to check availability of the commissioners for those dates.
Do we not want to finalize this more or less, uh, or I shouldn't say, do it before the appeals part of it? Because if we're, if they come with their appeals and, and we're going to cut it some more, potentially, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, so, are, then maybe before, uh, before June 30th?
Uh, I'm drawing it.
I, I mean, the difficulty with that is, um, um, you know, we're here at the 20th, I mean, we could, um, next Tuesday, the 27th, we'll be talking about the Fire District budgets, have that information for the commissioners on the 27th. And then, um, then we get into July 4th weekend, uh, so I.
That's where I'm looking, Phil, right now, is that, that 5, 6, 7 of Ju, of Ju, or of July.
Well, you'll do it without me.
You're gone then.
Yes.
All right, we'll not do it without you, Phil.
Are we working too hard to do this on a Tuesday? I mean.
No, I'm, I'm thinking any date, any day of the week is, because this is going to be a special.
Right, so that's why I'm suggesting the, that 13th, 14th, 17th would probably be our, sort of our sweet spot.
Yeah, I'm gone.
Of, of July, you mean?
Oh, you're, you're out, okay.
I mean, we got, the reason I'm pushing it, uh, because.
I mean, we could potentially do something next Tuesday in the afternoon?
That'd be.
Except we got that training. I, I mean, I, I scheduled, I don't have to go, that staff special training got rescheduled for next.
I believe that went to July 27th.
Oh, was it? Okay, okay.
I think June 27th is not a working.
27th in the afternoon would be fine.
Okay.
I'm fine.
That interrupts my golfing schedule, but, uh, I'm going to have to go along with it, I think in this case.
Sorry.
Let's do it. I thought, you know, this is, this is the most important day of, basically of the year, of our year, I think, so we just need to get our homework done and individually and, and be prepared for June the, the 27th, 1:30 or something like that, or?
We'll figure out a room and a time and.
After, after our regularly scheduled meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or unless we want to clear the agenda totally that day and do it in the morning in our meeting, I don't know if that's a good idea or not.
I, I don't know that there are a lot of other things on for the 20, I mean, I, I think it's a relatively light meeting, we could possibly do it next Tuesday in the morning.
Mr. Chair, why don't you just work that out?
That's fair. I thank you very much for that suggestion and I will, I will. And you'll all be invited.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, I think that's where we're going to end the budget discussion for today and, uh, I, I'm, I share Commissioner Shadwick's enthusiasm about how this is done. Uh, we're going to hopefully save the taxpayers some money somewhere along the line, uh, but don't expect it to be a revenue neutral type thing. I shouldn't use that phrase either. Your, your taxes are probably going to go up a little, so. Okay, we're going to move to item number four.
Commissioners' comments.
Any commissioner have comments? All right, item number five.
Announcements.
What's on the agenda for anyone? No announcements? Comments? I will take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion is adjourned, or, motion is passed, 5-0, we are adjourned. Thank you.